Calling the meeting to order. Welcome to the City of Milpitas Planning Commission Meeting. Today is April 9, 2025. We'd like to welcome everybody, everyone to tonight's meeting. I'd like to read the public comments instructions. Oral public comments may only be provided live during the planning commission meeting in person. All comments provided should be, shall be limited to three minutes or less as determined by the chair. All public members will be limited to one comment per agenda item and one comment for non-agenda items. Members of the public may submit written comments by email, applying department and milpitas.gov. Alright, time for the pledge of allegiance. Under Commissioner Kong is going to lead us.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all, thank you commissioners. Can we take the roll call please, Ms. Medina?
Yes, good evening Chair and Planning Commissioners, Staff and Community Members. I will take attendance, starting with Commissioner Kong.
Present.
Commissioner Owasty.
Present.
Commissioner Medina Ashby is absent. Commissioner Albana.
Present.
Commissioner Galang.
Present.
Vice Chair Culkins.
Present.
And Chair Gupta.
Present.
Thank you. He is, Assistant City Attorney Creach is joining us virtually, so he's here live.
Okay, so I'll request Attorney Creach to read the conflict of interest. If he's available.
Thank you Chair. I ask the Chair and every other member of the Commission whether he or she has a financial or personal conflict of interest related to any of the items on tonight's agenda.
Commissioner Kong.
None.
Commissioner Owasty.
None.
Commissioner Albana.
None.
Commissioner Galang.
None.
Vice Chair Culkins.
None.
And Chair Gupta.
None.
Thank you.
Thank you. I further ask the Chair and every other member of the Commission to please disclose any campaign contributions of $100 or more received within the last 12 months from any of the parties entering into contracts with the City on tonight's agenda. Or contributions received from development project applicants for development projects on tonight's agenda.
Commissioner Kong.
None.
Commissioner Owasty.
None.
Commissioner Albana.
None.
Commissioner Galang.
None.
Vice Chair Culkins.
None.
And Chair Gupta.
None.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let the record reflect no reported conflicts. Thank you very much Chair.
Item is the approval of the agenda. Does anybody have any objection to the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting agenda for April 19, 2025.
I second that.
Thank you Commissioner Kong.
Aye.
Commissioner Owasty.
Aye.
Commissioner Albana.
Aye.
Commissioner Galang.
Aye.
Vice Chair Culkins.
Aye.
And Chair Gupta.
Aye.
Thank you.
Any announcements? None. How about Planning Director, Mr. Lee?
Thank you Chair Gupta. I have a few announcements today. The first one is that the public draft of the Gateway Main Street Specific Plan is available on the City's website and on the, on the project website. Additional correspondents will go out to further share the, the public draft plan. It's, and it's a time for the public to review the project and make comments and provide feedback for, for this important effort to revitalize Main Street. The Supplemental Environmental Impact Report, which accompanies this project, will also be released shortly. I also want to announce that there will be a Commissioners Appreciation Dinner on April 17th, next week. So, yeah. Looking forward to seeing the Commissioners there and just recognizing the hard work that goes into serving the community in this way. And then also lastly, want to announce that the regularly scheduled next planning commission meeting on April 23rd has been canceled. So with, with, because of an absence of items, so the next meeting will be on May 14th. Thank you.
Thank you Mr. Lee. Next item is the public forum. Members of the public are invited to speak on any item that does not appear on today's agenda. Comments will be limited to three minutes or less at the Chair's discretion. When called to speak, you are encouraged to state your name for the record. As an item not listed on the agenda, no action can be taken. However, the Planning Commission may instruct the staff to place the item on a future meeting agenda. Are there any speakers for pub?
Chair, there are no public speaker cards.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Like to then close the public forum. Can we take a roll call please? Ms. Medina, can we take a roll call for the closing of the public forum?
Chair, if I may?
Yes, Attorney Creach.
You don't need a motion to close the public forum. It is only to close public hearings.
Okay, thank, thank you. Alright, then in that case, we'll start the public hearing. The main item for public hearing today is deck variance 860 Evans Road. Like to have presentation by project planner, Mr. Randy Bees.
Okay, thank you Commissioner Gupta. And good evening fellow Commissioners and fellow staff. Next slide please. The applicant is requesting a minor site development permit and a variance to construct a 1,082 square foot covered deck or attached accessory building on a 0.8 acre lot. The project also includes a variance request to deviate from one of the hillside development standards for side setbacks, which requires a minimum of 40 feet. Per the Milpitas Municipal Code, accessory buildings structurally attached to the main building are treated as part of the building in terms of development standards, including setbacks. The project is located on a 0.8 acre parcel on Evans Road, near the intersection of North Park Victoria Drive and Jaclyn Road. The property and neighboring properties are zoned R1H or single-family residential hillside with the valley floor just below. The existing single-family structure does not have any related planning entitlements as it was constructed before the Hillside Combining District was adopted in 1992. The oldest building permits show that the existing dwelling had been constructed since at least 1969. The MSD application was first submitted in October of last year and after the first round of review of the application, staff determined that a variance request would be necessary in order to approve the proposed cover deck in the proposed location. Pursuant to the municipal code, the City Council shall have approval authority upon recommendation by the Planning Commission of any variance application relating to projects within the hillside. Although most MSD permits are processed at the staff level, the applications have been consolidated so that the final action on the project is made by the highest review authority. Here's the existing overall site plan on the left and the proposed site plan on the right. Next slide. Here is a summary of the development standards. The project site is developed with a single-family residence and 690 square foot attached two-car garage. A significant portion of the existing structure is located within the 40-foot side yard setback near the southern or southwest property line. So any further encroachment would be considered an expansion of a non-conforming structure. Next slide. And here's an enlarged view of the existing and proposed site plans. The proposed cover deck is shown on the right in yellow. The existing side yard setbacks range from as much as 20 feet on the top left to as little as 11 feet to the existing sunroom, which is the little appendage also shown on the left. A variance is defined as a type of permit that sanctions deviations from the adopted zoning ordinance related to physical development standards, such as lot size, building setbacks, and height limits. The municipal code states that in the R1, R2, and R1H districts, a legal non-conforming building or structure shall not be added to or enlarged in any manner unless the additions or enlargement conforms to all development standards and regulations, including yard setbacks. Planning staff does not recommend approval because there is no evidence of special circumstances and this would be an enlargement of a non-conforming structure. Next slide. Staff believes the project does not meet all the MSD findings, particularly due to the proposed location of the covered deck, which is not deemed to be compatible with the neighboring homes within the Hillside Combining District. Next slide. Staff believes the project does not meet the required findings of a variance. For context, the subject property is one of five properties within the immediate vicinity that are developed with single-family dwellings. The subject property was developed prior to the adoption of the City's Hillside Combining District, resulting in non-conforming setbacks along the southwest property line. Other adjacent properties are also non-conforming in terms of side setbacks, although they have not requested to further encroach into those setbacks at this time. Furthermore, there are no special circumstances of the property that require this accessory building to be located in the proposed area and encroach into the side setback. Instead, the proposed accessory building could have been relocated elsewhere on the property in a manner that could meet all development standards of the Hillside Combining District. Far from depriving the subject property of privileges enjoyed by other properties in the vicinity under identical zone classifications, the proposed variance would actually grant the property a special privilege by allowing an expansion of a non-conforming building not normally available to similar properties. Staff believes it would set a bad precedent to avoid a variance for a non-conforming building since that is not a special circumstance. Staff also identified potential alternatives that are on the next slide, but our complete findings can be found in both the staff report and the resolution. In order to meet the setback requirements of the Hillside Combining District, it is not feasible to have an attached accessory building along the southwest side where it's currently proposed. However, staff has provided alternatives for the applicant that may provide similar amenities, such as installing a deck without a roof. The uncovered, uncovered deck would be considered an accessory structure instead of an accessory building and would be subject to a three-foot side setback. A second alternative would be to install the detached patio cover, gazebo, or similar structure. And this detached structure would also be subject to a three-foot side setback and would just have to adhere to a 12-foot height maximum and that structure could be feasible at the rear half of the property. Another alternative would be to install an attached cover deck in a new location, for example, on the northeast side of the, the building. It may be feasible, which currently has an existing side setback of approximately 68 feet. So they have approximately 30 feet to work with. Next slide. A notice was published in the Milpitas Post and a sign was placed near the property. The, the City also sent out 44 postcards informing residents and property owners of the project. To date, the planning department received one comment from the property owner directly to the south of the site in support of the project. The project is exempt from SEQA per SEQA Guidelines Section 15303 and 15305 since the proposed use meets SEQA's definition of a small structure. Furthermore, the proposed variance qualifies as a minor alteration as it does not result in the creation of a new parcel, nor does it result in any changes in land use or density. In closing, staff recommends the Planning Commission open the public hearing to receive comments, move to close the public hearing, consider the exemptions in accordance to SEQA, and adopt Resolution Number 25-006 recommending the City Council deny minor site development permit number MS24-0257 and variance BA25-0001 in conformance with the development standards of the R1H single-family residential hillside zoning district, subject to the findings. This concludes staff's summary of the project. The applicant is also available to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you Randy. Do any of the Commissioners have any questions or comments? Commissioner Kong?
Yeah, I do.
Yeah, um, I do have questions, but I saw the applicant. Can we invite the applicant up? Yeah, um, good evening. I really appreciate your email. Uh, we received that. Um, I just wanted to ask for clarification because the staff did mention that there are three alternatives that were proposed or suggested to you. Can you give us or share with us the reason why none of the three alternatives were considered?
Um, the reason that the the suggested recommended alternatives are not viable for us is, first of all, uh, it's been recommended to have um, uh, either a freestanding covered deck in the back um, or attached to the house. Uh, and the third one is the, a deck without roof. Those are the three options uh, offered. Um, the first one, freestanding covered deck um, in the back would be um, not very um convenient and, and um, um, and agreeable uh, way to, to enjoy the deck because we would have to walk out of the house but, and then walk to the back before we reach the deck. So it, it's not a, a very agreeable and, and re- reasonable way to access and enjoy the deck. Um, if it's attached to the back of the house, it's the same problem. We have to walk out of the house to get to it. There's no access directly from the house possible because the back of the house is the master bedroom. There's no access to the back. So unless we open a door in there um, to go to the deck, um, it's not a very desirable layout, architecturally speaking either. Um, a deck without a roof, um, we can do that, but then, um, we are having western exposure. So the sun has really um, harsh beating down on us all the time. And then it's an open space, uh, exposed, so the wind is really strong. So if we put up umbrellas like I suggested by the staff, um, it even poses more of a danger to the, the house below us because the wind can just sweep it away, sweep all the, the um, the umbrellas down and then damage the house. So it's not a very safe and, and desirable and, and effective either because umbrellas can only cover like a, a small area. So we have to maybe put ten or twenty umbrellas on the deck to really, really, you know, cover uh, us. Um, so it's, it's not a very, and then if it's raining, we, we are not covered either. You know, so to, to me, it's, to us, it's not a very desirable and viable uh, options. Um, so right now, where the patio, the existing patio is, um, it's the most logical attachment to the house because there's a, a door accessing from the living room and the kitchen right into the, the patio. So if we could extend that surface, because our house, it, it's said to be seventeen hundred something square feet, but actually it's only sixteen because there's a, an alcove in there, so there's no footage counted there. If they counted the, the, the covered pa- covered garage, um, carport, then maybe that would be that, that much. But the house is small, two bedrooms. Um, so we, we don't have room to really play and entertain um, comfortably. So we need to expand the deck with a cover to protect ourselves from the elements. Um, so that's the only logical and, and um, lo- um, location that would allow a uh, an organic and, and, and flowing um, access to, to the deck from the house. And it's architecturally more compact that way because if they suggested the, um, the attachment or the, the deck in the, in the back attached to the house or freestanding in the back, you would see another humongous structure in the back. So if you look at the, the map there, the house is only that much. So if you extend on the width part a little bit, it'd still be covered by the greenery and the new landscapes that we would put in to make it more, more uh, private and beautiful, um, instead of having more of, of a, um, a mass of a, a, a structure in the back. So that would be more of an obstructive view uh, from below, in my opinion. So, and then, I mean, architecturally speaking, it's, it's ugly. It's, it's not, yeah, it's just not, um, it's not pleasing. Um, so that, that's the reason that we, we would propose the, the location that we want, that we wish that we could have, and that will require a variance for that. Um, even if we want to do it in the back, attached to the house, the house is already non-conforming. So attaching it, so we still need a variance for that, right? So.
Thank you. Um, I do want to have a, I have a follow-up question to what your proposal is. Um, can we flashback that aerial view that was just up? I'm, I'm really trying to understand the, the deck. So right now you have a sunroom, right?
Yeah, ju- does, does.
So next to the sunroom, that's a patio, right? Is that your patio existing?
The sunroom is the patio.
So the white part is the sunroom, right? To the, to the north west?
The deck?
There is a, it, it looks like a deck. Is that a deck? It's an uncovered deck right now?
Uncovered deck, uh, that we, uh, we want to, uh, have a permit for that.
But you want to actually have a permit to also extend the deck all the way to the front of your entryway, right? So.
Because right now, um, you see the opposite side of, of the slope from the, is, is the entry. Uh, is the front door. And, uh, we, it's very confusing for, for people when they get to our house. They don't know which one is the front door. And the, the delivery people would put stuff everywhere because they could not find the front door since it's on the side in the back. So when, when I extend the deck there, um, I would indicate that that's the front side, you know, next to the garage door in front.
So you're, you're saying that once you extend the deck to the front of the garage door, you will indicate?
Is this side.
Right, to the southeast side, right?
The, this side. I don't know the front. The driveway, you see the driveway, the, the driveway, so that's the front.
So you want to indicate that as the front?
Yeah.
Um.
Right now, the door is on that side. And that's very confusing and that's, uh, and if, if the deck, the covered deck is there, I would have a, um, steps up front and, and then put you know, greenery and stuff to indicate that this is the front. So people can, can get there, um, right away.
So where is your new ex- new entry to the house?
And the new entry would be, um, the patio door that get to the deck. Um. Okay, the deck is long and around the, the front is the, the garage door, the, the garage, and then after that is the living room.
Mm-hmm.
So the living room and the kitchen would have a patio door, a sliding patio door to the, to the patio.
Okay.
The current patio now. So that would be the front door.
Okay, instead of the one that's all, all the way on the right side?
I can extend the, 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 the roof to, to this side, um, I would provide it like a, an um, a foyer, so to speak, to get to the front door.
Okay, and what about the sunroom? Is that gonna be reconfigured?
Room, uh, would, would be taken away.
Oh, so you're gonna, I see. So you're gonna replace the sunroom with just an, a covered deck?
Yeah, the, the longer, bigger covered deck.
And your covered deck is gonna be surrounded by railing, right? Based on my understanding from the design, it's a low rail.
Yeah.
So it still has that openness to it?
Yeah.
What color are you using for the material?
Yeah.
Um, and the, and the covering, I mean, is there a reason why the, the roof size is shaped all the way to the end, knowing that the distance from the deck to the boundary of your lot size, you know, lot line is getting very, very narrow, right, to five feet distance? Is there any reason to not have it taper in a little bit? So that way you don't go too close to the, to the lot line?
To the property line?
Yeah, to the property line. Um, is there any reason to keep it the same width all the way through rather than have it taper in?
It's, it's aesthetically pleasing to have a, um, a uniform shape, so to speak. I mean, a rectangle, a, a, a perfect shape. That's the only reason. If we have a narrower there and open, a bigger up front, it, it, it's not very aesthetic, I would think.
Um, okay, all right. Uh, I have no more questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
There any more questions from other commissioners?
Yeah, uh, if I may add a few things that I would like to, uh, add is that, um, the, uh, I have the neighbor from the north uphill who are here in support of the project as well. So the two most affected, uh, properties are, are, are making a known of their support of the project, that they have no concerns about that. And, um, so, uh, it's, it's not gonna be any, uh, it's not a problem for, for the neighborhood. Um, on top of that, when we do the deck, the engineering part of it, of the footings and the way that they space them and then have tiebacks to it, um, it would help, help, uh, control the, uh, soil erosion and, and movement. So that would be beneficial to the, the house down, downhill to us also, as well as to us. So it's, um, it's not a, a bad thing to have that deck over there. Also, um, we've observed that on, um, at the two hundred and fifty old Evans Road, there was a, a small lot with an odd shape, like a triangular shape, but very small. So, and right up the street from Old Evans Road on the foothill side. So it's part of the foothill, um, zoning, I, I would think. Um, they just built the house in nineteen twenty-one. They bought the land in nine, two thousand eighteen, and they built it in two thousand twenty-one. So it's new, um, new coding, no, new code, new regulations, and yet they don't have any setbacks all around because the, the, the piece of land is so small. And it's so small that maybe they needed a variance for a second story as well to have the, the, the footage, the square footage for the house. So that means that there are precedents in variances when it needs to be. In our case, I think the, we do have special, uh, circumstances because when the, the subdivisions were formed, they didn't think about the future regulations. So when they cut that piece of land that we have, um, it's half of it is slopes, forty-degree incline. And it's half of the land. So the other half is right next up to the, uh, property line. So there's, it, it's like sixty feet total in width. So if we abide to the forty feet setback, we won't be able to build anything, um, at all. You know, so what we build right now in the back, we have to, uh, if you show the, the map again, the house is up, up to the property line. And if we want to abide to the forty feet, um, setback rule for the new deck proposed to be in the back, it would be like lopsided way in the back, separate from it. So it's like building here and then another building here. So it's not aligned, and it's, it's, it's gonna be very ugly. You know, and since the setback is so huge all around, um, our eight, point eight acre land would be reduced to only four thousand feet, square feet of buildable, uh, pad. You know, conforming. That's, that's essentially reducing the value of our land. You know, so it's, uh, it's a special circumstance. So it's not like we are requesting something that's not reasonable. But in our s- a case, the way that the land is shaped and the building pad is so restricted, um, we have no room, no wiggle room at all unless we, we have, um, the variance in this case.
Um, I, can I go back to a question? Right, my question is actually for Randy because I, I want Randy to help us to explain one of the alternative that was suggested.
Mm-hmm.
Um, Randy, can you, do you mind explaining again about the detached cover? Because when the applicant was explaining that one of the alternative was to detach the, the deck, I don't think that was my understanding based on the report. My understanding was the deck can be attached to the house. It's just the cover has, can be, um, needs to be detached as one of your alternative. Is that correct?
Um, yes, thank you, Commissioner Kong. Um, Ms. Medina, if you could go back to slide thirteen for the alternatives. Um, so the, um, patio cover, an attached patio cover could go um, on the side of, on the other side of the single-family residence, um, in other words, the northeast side. Um, or if they wanted to keep a covered structure um, somewhere else on the property, that might be feasible with something similar to like a gazebo. Um, and that detached structure would just have to be on the, um, back half, on the rear half of the property. And, um, unfortunately, that would still have to comply with um, the accessory building setbacks, uh, but it may still be feasible.
Um, so there is no way to have it as, um, just a deck that is attached on the in this diagram, it would be the west side, right, the west side? If they keep the deck, um, but the cover, is there any way to retain the cover and still meet the standards on the west side?
With a detached structure?
With a detached structure. We have a detached cover, right? But the deck can still be attached. Is that correct? On, on, you, you need the deck to be also fully detached. I'm trying to understand the requirements, except the difference between the deck as well as the cover.
Uh, if it was uncovered, it could remain attached on that, uh, in the same location where they're proposing it.
Okay, and if it's using some sort of like gur- uh, gazebo design, can it still be on the west side of the house?
If it was detached, um.
The deck is still attached, but the covering?
I think the deck and the cover have to be together, right?
Well, that's what I'm trying to understand. Can the deck be attached, but the covering has a slight separation from?
Yeah, I think she's talking about the deck, the cover being attached to the deck, not the house, and the deck being attached to the house. That's the question, right?
That's the question. Will that meet the, the standards?
Um, I'm not too sure, um, understanding the question. I, I think it would be, um, like a structural question. I'm not too familiar with any, uh, patio covers that would be that would have a roof covering not attached to the deck. that would have a roof covering not attached to the deck.
No, Randy, sorry. The roof covering would be attached to the deck, kind of like a gazebo that's attached to the deck, just not attached to the house. The deck itself would be attached to the house, but would it be feasible to make the, you know, a standing sun shade, so to speak, that's just attached to the deck?
But will that make any difference to the proposal? I mean, in terms of?
Commissioner Kong's question is trying to find out some other options of keeping that as is.
Yeah.
You know, with what the roof idea is.
Yeah, trying to see whether there's any way to make this design be aligned in compliance with the standards by having just a small separation of the covering from the house.
Attorney Creach, would you consider that a detached building?
So the the interpretation of that part between detached and attached is a playing director um, decision based on interpretation of the code.
If if I may?
Second, Randy, one more question, though. Is the variance on this because of the um roof covering or is it because it encroaches on the lot line?
Uh, it is for both. So the um, the thing that is triggering the variance is the attached building requirement, which requires the forty foot setback. And it's considered an attached building because of the roof.
Are there any other questions?
Yeah, Chair, yeah. I'm speaking for the applicant. Randy, if the applicant, um, be attached deck with retractable roof, is that possible?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that one more time?
What I'm saying is if the applicant, um, with the attached deck, but um you know, you said without the roof, but if there's a there is a way they can put retractable roof.
A retractable roof?
Free standing roof. Not attached.
Because the issue here is you can put the deck without the roof, right? But if it's retractable.
Um. Like a retractable awning, is that what you're talking about?
Yes. Because you don't want.
If I may point to another direction, um, the purpose of the setback um, here, because when we bought the house, I remember the setback was five feet for the side setback. The front was twenty five. So that was the understanding when we wanted to build a deck there too. Um, but we, well, we 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 lost money in the stock market, so we could not do it um then. And then it changed to forty feet that we weren't aware of. Uh, we thought the five feet were still um enforced. So I, in my understanding, the setback rule is to um prevent um small subdivisions, future subdivisions, uh, to preserve the hillside's um of of view, you know, so that there is no overcrowding of developments. So, um, but we are old subdivision that did not take those future regulations and um, in in consideration. So we wouldn't know to cut, subdivide um lots that would cover those um setback rules. So in in that, um, in that spirit, um, we are deserving of a um, a variance approval here because uh, we 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 cannot control those changes. And it should not pertain to old subdivisions that that have no way of 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 um, abiding to those new regulations that that, you know, can't correspond with the size of 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 our land, you know, and it was not our fault to have the land like that. I mean, um, it's already established. So um, short of asking for a grandfathering roof of the five feet um, setback, um, we we would ask for a variance in this case because um, otherwise our land is pretty much worthless. I mean, the small, the house is already small.
I I think I understand your, you are, you explained everything very nicely. So let's go on with more questions and then we can, we can discuss. Yeah, go, go ahead.
Thank you, Commissioner Galan. Ladies first, huh? Thank you very much, Ms. Wen, for explaining that further. I had a question for Randy. What are, what kind of roof are we talking about? That the applicant has, is wanting to put over this deck? Metal roof?
The proposed deck would be asphalt shingle, similar to the existing single family home.
Okay, and do you have somehow like a topical, like a map where you could see how many other neighbors are beside this particular lot? Uh, do, would we know how many are adjoining neighbors, the back, the side?
Thank you, Ms. Medina. Yeah, there's not too many neighbors uh, to this property. The property to the east is undeveloped. Um, the properties to the northeast, uh, I believe it's eight fifty and southeast, those are both single family residences. Directly to the south, um, there's another single family residence and there is the Milpitas Mosque, um directly to the northwest.
Because if I read the the notes here, basically it's saying like, one of the reasons that it could possibly be denied is because, uh, basically it's going to be a precedence to the other developments that are upcoming, but I see there are just very few homes. But with what our community is facing right now and our area here is, we need to also let the residents feel that they can expand the enjoyment of their homes and we have housing shortages, but her, the home that is, that is uh, the subject of this thing is basically, it's just a two bedroom, right? It's a very small uh, area of a house, so it seems that most of the the compliance, CEQA and everything it does, except that it's just basically, right? Are you saying, Randy, that it's just basically the forty feet minimum that it doesn't, it doesn't comply with that?
Yes.
Right, unfortunately, the hillside code is very restrictive.
Yeah.
Yeah, if we strictly adhere to that, then um, there's nothing else that I can say because you know.
Looking at the diagram, um, it would look also not a very good floor plan if they don't have access to the backside for the view, they have it on the sides. Um. I think we just that the setback, we could be possibly worked out wherein we could give an exemption to this variance, just to this one property.
If I may, um.
Yes.
Speak to previous questions, but also to the kind of the discussion right now. So I guess to answer the previous questions about like different solutions about keeping the deck and putting like a detached, free standing gazebo like on a larger deck, I mean, these are things we could explore, but right now the proposal before you is at, with an attached roof, right, to the main home. Um, so I think, you know, we could certainly look at different options and make an interpretation and do our analysis and all that, but right now, it's difficult to do that like in a hearing because, you know, that's usually something we wanna you know, talk about with the applicant, um, and we haven't even seen any proposals either. So let's say if the applicant were amenable to making some changes, um, we'd have to go back, get a revised application and then come back to the planning commission. So just wanna just kind of clarify that that's the process that we'd have to take if the applicant wanted to modify the application, because if you go to the city council um, and then we, the application changes in the meantime, then the planning commission did not see that, whatever the changes were. So typically, when a project changes, we wanna come back to the planning commission. Um, so just want to, and yeah, just kind of, kind of throw that out there and then um, I do just wanna remind everyone that there are five findings that every variance must meet. Um, and typically inconvenience is not a special circumstance. Um, it has to be a special circumstance in terms of the size of the lot, the shape of the lot, the topography, the location or surroundings. Um, so I I'd like to just remind everyone that inconvenience is not necessarily enough. Um, I think the applicant um, if I could continue to speak, I think the applicant brought up some other like considerations, but that hasn't been presented to us until, not in this way, until this hearing. So um, like even if we we were to make the argument that the slope doesn't allow for a a patio cover somewhere, a deck somewhere else, we don't know that because we haven't seen another proposal and a, like an analysis of like, you know, like if, if, for example, if the applicant were to show that it would cause more grading or there would be other reasons why um, that these alternatives aren't possible. Um, we just haven't seen that yet. So, but again, the alternatives discussion is only one of the findings. Like, it's only one of the considerations. Um, I just wanna remind everyone that the variance request has to meet all five of the findings.
Okay, let me, uh.
We have.
Let me ask a couple of questions myself or make some comments. Um, so the way I understand that what you're trying to do here seems to be the only practical solution to what you're trying to do, right? Because as you explained, all the other options were not really practical and feasible for you, right?
Mm-hmm.
And you started out with the five feet variance, five feet uh, side yard setback. And the result of what you're trying to do now is more like four feet setback, right?
Five feet.
Still five feet. So you haven't really changed the setback from before this proposal, right?
Mm-hmm. Well, um, five feet is is, right now, we don't know exactly. It it could be more because I haven't calculated um the 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 width of the the deck yet.
Okay.
But for the variance, I would be have the leeway, so at, you know.
Yeah, okay, but anyway, it's still in that range, in the five feet kind of range, right? Now, the the house on the uh, southwest side, uh, the neighbor on the southwest side is still about, they're not, not the boundary, but their house is still about hundred feet away, right?
The their house, the the um, the slope that separate our properties are about sixty to seventy feet wide before we reach the the property line to.
For read the property line, but that the neighbor on that southwest side is from this deck position is still close to hundred feet, is what I understand, right?
Mm-hmm.
And on the other side is actually two hundred feet, but this is still hundred feet. And that neighbor has no objection.
They have no objection.
And the neighbor is here, there's no objection to that, right?
Mm-hmm.
And the other neighbor you have on the northeast side also has no objection.
Well, they didn't voice anything and and then they are not really affected by.
They are not affected by it.
Yeah.
And I understand that there is no issue with respect to the crest line or the view from the valley floor.
No.
That's, that's not affected.
Yeah, the fine findings, we haven't addressed them yet, but we we can talk about them, the five findings. Um, it's a, we're gonna maintain the hillside crest view because it's so low, it's not high up there, and the smallest low uh, ceiling, I mean, it's only seven uh, less than seventeen feet, it's only thirteen feet high. And the deck would even even lower, okay? So it doesn't affect the crest line or the view. Um, if the bulk will not be there because it's gonna be hidden behind um, trees and bushes and as of now, you don't see half of the house anyway, so it's gonna be the same with the whole, when the whole deck is extended to to the back. Um, and right, right now, the patio is about uh, twelve feet out. So maybe I would wish to go out like three, four more feet, like to fifteen, sixteen feet. Right? So it's not gonna encroach a lot more into uh, as to where it is right now. But all those bulk or side, unsightly uh, view would be minimized or neutralized by landscaping easily. And so it's not a um, an issue with that, and it's gonna be harmonious uh, with the rest of the surroundings. It's not gonna be an eyesore of any sort. Uh, not any bulk because the the landscaping, the the greenery.
I think we understand. Thank, thank you very much. I appreciate it. No, that's okay. I think I want to talk more with the fellow commissioners here for now. I think we understand what you're proposing and what the concern is. I was trying to justify keeping your proposal intact, uh because I I believe there is no real, real uh, problem, it seemed to me from whether it's uh, view from the neighbors or neighbors objecting to it
Yeah.
or the hillside impact on the hillside view.
Yeah.
Um, so, uh.
So the only issue.
Only thing is, uh, the whether you have special circumstance or not, and that's debatable because uh, obviously, uh, you know, let's just discuss with the commissioners here. So I want to find out if we I know the the planning team has recommended denying the proposal. I'm I'm thinking if we can make an exception and accept the proposal, because I don't really see that much of downside. Uh, so like to get everybody's opinion.
Chair, Chair, yes. Um, you said you have an existing path here right now, correct? And you want, you wanna build a deck from, from south to north, correct? So what's, how much, how much a distance from the deck to the property line? What's, how, what's the distance? How many distance? How many feet? Yes.
Distance?
Yes.
Um, the minimum is five, uh, it could be seven seven feet or eight feet.
So so what is your main purpose why you wanna build?
Yeah, right now, uh, um the sunroom is extended to twelve feet out, so maybe three more feet added to it. So, uh, right now, the the patio is about seven, eight feet from the property line at that, that position. Because it's wider in the front. Um, yeah, so if we extend it three, maybe it would be like, yeah, five feet.
And about the roof?
The roof?
Yes.
Same, same thing.
Same thing.
Yeah.
So what type of roof are you going to, um?
The same with the house.
Same height? The house, okay.
The single.
Yes. So, um, where's your main entrance? It is, this is from, from the south, right, main entrance? It is a one-story home, right? It is elevated home? No.
Pardon me?
It is elevated?
Um, maybe, maybe about, with with the crawl face, it's a crawl space.
So your, your dining room and living room facing west?
It's about midway of the house.
And.
After the garage, you see the line, the line there, the garage, and right that, after that would be the living room.
And your master bedroom, which that.
Kitchen, yeah.
How about your master bedroom?
In the back, where it's narrowed down, there's a corner, yeah. And then one on that side.
So there's no way you can put two deck at the back?
No.
Uh, separate with the roof, right? Yeah, it's, there's, there's, there's no view. There's a view.
Yeah, uh-huh. No view and no access and, um and, yeah, I I, I can't think of any other uh, location that I could you know.
Before we continue, do we have any comments from the public, whether two neighbors want to, want to say something?
Okay. If I may speak, um, so, I mean, I I think the applicant is saying things that, you know, like this is impossible or that is impossible, but um, that hasn't been justified. It's been spoken of. But I would just caution that, like, if we had seen all these things and gotten, like, justified, like proven statements of why this is impossible, that is impossible, this might be a different conversation, but we haven't had that. Um, so I just wanna remind everyone to, like, remember that we need to have some sort of actual, like, analysis and justification to show that these other options are impossible, but also that that's only one of the the, the other findings talk about special circumstances. and then also special privileges. I would say one of the concerns for staff is that if we grant a variance in this situation, other applicants can request variances at that same level of threshold, which is essentially for cost or convenience. And that would make, make it much more difficult for staff as we review all future variances. When we have an example, a precedent that, a precedent that could be set with a project like this that hasn't necessarily met the threshold. And I would also say typically for applicants, like, we give, we allow for five minutes for a presentation and then the applicant speaks when asked for a question. It's not necessarily meant to be an open dialogue where we just go back and forth the whole time. So I just wanna, like, remind everyone of that, that proper procedure as well.
Can I address the special circumstances and the special privilege?
She has some comments.
Yes, I, while we are trying to help the applicant, at the same time, we have had precedent that lot of time, variances have been requested and there is a hillside ordinance. And we have been typically following the ordinance in these circumstances. And I fully agree with Director Lee that we, this will become if they, if they could change something and come up to something which we can approve, then it will look justified. Otherwise, everybody, the people who have not met variances, they can come up now and in future, we will not be able to say no to anybody if they do not accept any change, little bit of change which is needed by the planning department. Thanks.
I don't think it would be setting.
That's okay. She, she, he's not asking you a question. Let's just discuss among ourselves.
I know, but can I, can I add information? Like I already said that there's a house on Old Evans Road that already had variances, similar variances.
Um, is it at two fifty Evans Road?
Old Evans Road.
Old Evans Road, okay.
So.
I looked up two fifty Evans Road and that was in the county, but I'll look up the old Evans Road.
Are there any other comments? Vice Chair, Colkins, you have any comments? Yeah, Commissioner Kong.
Yeah, Chair Gupta, I wanted to at least express my view on this. When staff says that there are three alternatives and the applicant believes that all three alternatives are not feasible, I just feel like perhaps the dialogue hasn't been fully exhausted between staff and the applicant. Because just like what the applicant understood, the, you know, you understood it as the covering has to be like umbrellas, right? But the staff is suggesting that you can, it can be a gazebo. So a gazebo provides a lot of shade and covering. So that's why even for me as a commissioner, it is unclear to me, right? What are the, how to implement the alternatives? And it still isn't clear even to me right now, having heard some of the explanation because Randy was saying that this is at the discretion of the planning director to define if a gazebo is attached to the deck would be considered a structure or would it be considered a building? So I think there's a lot of vague rules here that I personally do not feel that I have all the information to make a decision.
Yes, because like the exploration of alternatives that we didn't think of because we only thought of three and the ones that were being discussed and proposed are, are new and creative. It's just difficult for staff to make a comment on that because it's not something we had considered previously. So I would say that's correct. And then for Old Evans Road, when I try to look up two fifty Old Evans Road, I either find an Evans Road in the foothill, so not in the hillside, or an Evans Road that is not in the city's jurisdiction, so.
When, when I searched for it, it's, I wasn't sure whether it's Old Evans Road or a Piedmont Road or, because it's that part that, that's no longer Evans Road, but it's not quite Piedmont Road. But on the map of the land, it's definitely within Milpitas city line. And the name of the road, it's not clear at that part of the road.
But typically, yeah, and we could look into that. But typically for variances, it's for like lots like that are, like, I think also mentioned by the applicant, triangular, like oddly shaped and undersized, like way smaller. Or there's like a certain physical unique circumstance that necessitates the variance. And if we don't hold that line, then I think it'll open up the precedent for other properties that don't necessarily meet the high bar that the code sets with the five findings. And also the consistent with the intent of the code, like, it's, I don't think, staff does not believe that the variance is consistent with the intent of the code either. So it's not just the one finding, I wouldn't say it's just finding number one, but it's also finding number five. And it granting of special privileges, other properties could also argue for a similar situation where they can get a variance because, you know, it's inconvenient or, you know, like for those kinds of reasons. And then we would, you know, it would be in a difficult situation to say no to that.
So I'd like to now close the public hearing and then discuss among ourselves pros and cons of what we're trying to do. I think we've gone back and forth with the same information.
No, because I, I thought I was misunderstood by, you, you keep emphasizing about the fact that I said it's inconvenience. It's not, um, it's not the only reason of the inconvenience access to the deck. It's not the only one. It's one aspect of it regarding the, the alternatives offered. But the other circumstances, like the, the way that we have half of the pad reduced by slopes and then the other half is right, right from the property line, which is, which will reduce our buildability. So that's a special circumstances that I'm talking about.
Well, there are ways to build the deck without grading in sloped areas. It may be a little bit more expensive.
It's gonna be graded. It doesn't need any grading there.
I know. So what I'm saying is, like, it, it is, at least I haven't, we haven't as staff seen that it's not feasible because you can't have a deck in a sloped area. Just because there's a slope, it doesn't mean that the land is completely unusable. What it means that is either you'd have to grade it for certain types of projects or there's a way to make a deck fit and work on a slope hill, which happens all the time. So again, if we had, if we had all this information and justification for why these other alternatives were actually infeasible, then I think it'd be a different discussion. But we haven't really seen actual justification for why the other alternatives are not feasible.
Okay, can we close the public hearing? We have motion to close the public hearing, please.
Chair, if I may, before you make that motion?
Yes. Yes, Attorney.
I think that you need a clear call for public comment on this project. While I know you asked for it, you then specifically mentioned to the neighboring properties. So I think having a clear call for public comment before the public forum is closed would be helpful.
Okay, can we make sure there are no public comments, please?
Yes, Chair, we have not received any public comments for this public hearing item. Thank you.
Again, are there any public comments from, from the public who's here? So it looks like there are no public comments. So now can we close, have a motion to close the public hearing, please?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Any second?
A second, Chair.
Thank you, Vice Chair Colkins and Commissioner Galang. Commissioner Kong?
Aye.
Commissioner Wasti?
Aye.
Commissioner Albana?
Aye.
Commissioner Galang?
Aye.
Vice Chair Colkins?
Aye.
And Chair Gupta?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, I think now we should, among ourselves, discuss what we want to do. It's, it's, it's a tough call, so. Any comments?
Uh, Chair? Yes. I know it's hard to have a precedence, right? But considering that there is, when I looked at my notes here, that we were provided information, the subject property is one of five properties, so it's not like a ton of properties. Who's gonna ask for a variance? And if a variance is asked, even if it's a precedent, we can always, if it doesn't meet really certain requirements, even the crest line, we can always deny it. So my, my point here is we can possibly give an exception only because when they bought the property and even it says here, the subject property was developed prior to the adoption of the city hillside combining district that at that time it was not the forty feet setback, maybe given, given that. We want to always, you know, encourage families to come and live happily in Milpitas. But if it's not, like, looking at all these variance notes here, it, it has some, it does, it doesn't, it's not detrimental to the public health, safety or welfare. So I, I was thinking maybe we can work on that variance subject to further studies of what are the alternatives to make it work? Even if it may cost a little bit for the owner to do a little grading, whatever, because it has to be attached to a house. This house is so small. I know the Chappelle homes are already twenty-eight hundred square feet and adding only a thousand plus would make the home a better livable spacious home that's flowing. And it seems that the owners willing to adopt, but maybe we should, we should consider bringing it back, the drawing boards and looking at what exception and variances could be done to make it work. That's my, that's my comment, Chair.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I, I definitely understand the variances, the hillside ordinances and all of that that we have to deal with. So I can, I can appreciate where staff's coming from with all of this. Being a resident though, knowing the neighborhood that this is in, I don't see where it's gonna affect anybody around it. It's not gonna affect the aesthetics of the city. To Ms. Albana's point too, I think it's gonna improve the quality of that particular home, make it more livable and feasible. If we're too strict on some of the guidelines for some reasons, just following them, why are we here? So I think we can make an informed decision on this particular case.
Yeah, I'm actually of the same opinion. Because it seemed like there was a deck there already and that variance at that point in time, even though it, it was already originally non-conforming, but that was still acceptable. Nobody had any objection to it. The only difference that's there now, they're putting a roof on top of it, right? The deck was already there and so it doesn't really change, you know, the side, what you call the distance, side yard setback. It doesn't really change the setback. Setback was already there from the current deck. And only thing they're doing is putting the roof on top of it. And that actually changes from the code point of view, changes it from down to from forty feet to three or four feet. I think that the guide, the coding changes it. Otherwise, it doesn't affect anybody's view. It doesn't have no objection from the neighbors. So.
Sorry, Chair Gupta, I have to correct that. That's factually not true. They are encroaching more into the setback. It's not, the deck isn't there. There's like a, a smaller deck or like a sunroom. But what they're proposing now is not there right now. They're actually proposing to encroach more into the setback than the current non-conforming status.
So how much is the additional space they're taking from what is currently there? I mean, it's, I.
Yeah, Associate Planner, maybe Randy Bais could speak to that.
Randy can answer that.
Yeah, thank you, Director Lee. So they are encroaching further into the setback from the existing sunroom. I think Commissioner Gupta might have been referring to the portion of the existing uncovered deck that's closer to the front yard. That one would be more or less in line with the proposed covered deck. They are also further encroaching, encroaching into the side setback towards the north, northern part.
That adding couple of feet, I see a smaller rectangle here and that, I mean, looks like the existing deck. And then you add couple of more feet.
The rectangle that you see is the sunroom. There is a, what Associate Planner Randy Bais was saying is the covered deck further south that appears to be existing. So the new deck would expand upon the existing deck and move north and also encroach a little bit more to the west just because of the property line sloping.
Right, right. So, so I was talking about how much additional encroachment, where are we talking about? From the drawing, it seemed like it's probably just additional couple of feet, right? Two or three feet.
If I'm looking at it correctly, about five feet. Because the current existing setback is ten feet, eleven inches and then the resulting setback would be five feet. Well, no, actually, if you go further back, that does seem to still maintain. I don't know what that dotted line is, so maybe not. Yeah, maybe that's eyeballing it like seven feet over there and then going to five feet.
Chair, if I may?
Yes, Attorney Chris.
So I think what is becoming the confusion here is actually the definition of what a setback is. So setback is defined in the zoning ordinance as unobstructed space from the ground level up. So that when a setback requirement is set, that is what is required under our code for there to be unobstructed space from the ground level up. The existing sunroom would extend into that setback as a certain amount of encroachment as a pre-existing structure. But the remainder deck that is around there does not necessarily encroach into that setback area. What is being proposed therefore is not only an additional encroachment to that setback for the area that's the sunroom, but an addition of an entirely new encroachment for the full width of this covered deck. Because by definition, what you're doing is putting an obstruction in an area for which the code defines that no such vertical obstruction should exist.
And can I ask a question to the attorney? Attorney, can you help us to understand if this obstruction is driven by health and safety reasons such as wanting better access for our fire department perhaps that to be able to service on the side of the property line with adequate, you know, kinda spacing?
I think that this, that question actually gets back to what a variance is created for as a legal matter. So the city council is the one who gets to decide what the zoning law should be, what setbacks should exist and adopt it for consistent community planning that applies to all parcels and all persons in the city equally. What a variance then comes in and says is, is yes, the city council may have made that decision and said that this should be the rule for all properties. But because unique circumstances of this property, it would have unintended consequences and unreasonable consequences that, that it would deny the property and the ability to use that property as is customarily used. So that's the issue that's happening here. It's not necessarily of what exactly were all the factual underpinnings from when the city council adopted that law. It's that the city for the preservation of public health, safety and welfare adopted this rule saying that these setbacks must exist. And that might be for aesthetic reasons in the hillside area. It might be her privacy reasons. It might be for health, safety and welfare, airspace, bulking, any number of reasons. But the city council is the one that's empowered to make that call and they make it in a way that's applicable to all properties in the city. It's also the reason why the acceptance of a neighboring, one neighboring property or the other doesn't speak to any of the elements for granting a variance. That is, that neighbors currently might accept that doesn't speak to the issue because that structure and that variance will exist on the property forevermore, affecting all subsequent neighbors, all subsequent developers. subsequent neighbors, all subsequent developments. It makes the law apply in a different way to that particular parcel. And it's why no particular neighbor is empowered to be able to waive or consent to a change in the laws because they're set by the city council for the entire city.
Yes, and if I may add, there are, the hillside has a lot of regulations and standards and staff may not even, at least on a personal level, agree with all of them. But that alone is not justification for a variance, even if the standard itself may seem unreasonable. I'm not saying this one is, but for example, if there's a standard that we feel like is unreasonable, we still have to look at the findings for a variance and determine whether, whether we believe it's reasonable or not, to determine whether the project meets those findings. So just echoing what the Assistant City Attorney or Acting City Attorney said.
Any other comments or do we take a motion? My question is, is this going to the city council either way? Whether we deny or accept it?
Yes.
I have a question on, because of the way the wording is right now, you know, that the city staff is recommending denial. If we disagree with that and we wanted to approve it, how do we verbalize that? Because the motion in front of us is to deny it, we would just say no? Is that it?
Acting City Attorney Kreech could also weigh in, but you could make a different motion and a different recommendation. It could be a recommendation of approval to the city council.
Any other comments?
So I'm just, you know, reading through the five kind of criteria to approve the variance. I think the one that stands out to me is number three. It says that the required conditions of approval assure that the adjustment authorized will not constitute a grant of special privileges, which are inconsistent with the limitation placed upon other properties in the vicinity, subject to the same zoning regulation. So a variance, I mean, how do we make this finding? Because if we're going to grant a variance, we're giving it special privilege. Kind of counterintuitive to.
Yeah, I mean, I see we, a lot of projects we have been hearing, we all, a lot, a lot of times we accept variances, especially in terms of, you know, setbacks. I mean, it's very common to accept variances, right? This is not the first time we're going to accept any variance.
It's just the language, right? It says that it cannot constitute a special privilege. It is a special privilege, so I, I'm just wanting to.
If I could speak, the most common variance we've had in the hillside is for the, and it's not, it's a different kind of a variance, it's more like a deviation, the, the fence having a, like a metal material. But that's not a, that's not necessarily categorized as a variance in the code, but it's like a deviation. That's been a common one. I don't recall many instances of variances to setbacks that have gone through and been approved lately.
And Chair, if I may?
Yes, sir.
So I, I do want to be careful about the language here for, so that part for the fencing is not a variance in any way, shape or form. Rather, the hillside ordinance specifically allows for the planning commission to approve fences of different types. So it's merely following the process for discretionary approval specified. In terms of where, what I think Chair, what you were talking about with your comment of situations where properties have qualified for concessions or waivers under the state density bonus law or residential developments in other areas, that is a situation where state law is preempting or trumpeting local law. And that doesn't exist in this particular situation. And then Commissioner Kong, in response to your question about number three. So what that is asking for is that there is a requirement that there be conditions of approval adopted to assure that any variance granted does not confer special privileges. So for instance, if you were allowing an encroachment into the setback by the variance because it was justified, you would be conditioning that setback in ways that may go above and beyond what the code otherwise requires to protect privacy, to ensure other kinds of public goods, so that it's not a special privilege, but rather one that still fulfills the objectives of the code.
Chair, if I may.
Yes, Commissioner Madina.
Go ahead. Chair, if I may comment, I like that, what Attorney Kreech said.
I'm sorry, say that again?
I like what Attorney Kreech had just mentioned. If, if we somehow allow a little variance, that it will, you know, preclude to those things that basically the owner is willing to, what Attorney Kreech said.
Sorry, to be, to clarify, you would need to put forward conditions of approval to help protect those things. And far, as far as for determining what those conditions of approval might be, that may be difficult on the dais to do.
Yeah, I'm not sure if I completely understood Attorney Kreech in terms of what we're talking about, but. So it's, it's a tough call. Any, anybody wants to make a motion, either to deny it or to accept it? Vice Chair?
Voice. So actually, in this case, I would like to recommend approval, the variance request for the minor site development permit number MS 24-0257 and variance number VA 25-0001 to allow for a proposed covered deck to encroach onto the required side yard setback.
We modified to the extent that, that between now and the time is presented to the city council, that the applicant prepares a presentation, formal presentation, explaining all the special circumstances that she has been telling us verbally. And so that perhaps in front of the city council, it'll be a better justification for, for the acceptance.
I, I support your motion and want to add on to it that also come to the city council with very explicit justification of why all the three alternatives cannot, it's not feasible. Okay, because I do want to make sure the applicant gets, you know, work with staff to really understand why it's not doable, other than just it's a preference, right?
I agree. Maybe you can work with this, the planning staff and go into different options and alternatives and, and come up with a slightly different project report where you're actually explaining the justification and the special circumstances so that there is a better impression on the city council. So can you slightly revise your motion?
I think it's up to the applicant if they want to provide that stuff. I don't think we can direct them to do that.
Chair, if I may.
Yes, Attorney Kreech.
So I would say that the proposals being made are not necessarily items that would go into a motion. They can be feedback that's given to the applicant. The one part that I would caution the planning commission about is that the issues that you've brought up that may require further development are the very same issues that may be necessary to make the findings before you tonight.
I'm sure I understood the last part of it.
If I may, I think what City Attorney Kreech is saying is the additional justification that is desired should actually be clear now in order to, those findings need to be, should be made now in order to make the recommendation. Rather than kind of deferring it for a later.
Yeah, I mean, the additional justification is, is, I think it's clear to some of us because of the acceleration and the special circumstances that have been described. So based on that, actually, we're making a motion. This Vice Chair already made the motion and there is a second. Can we take the roll call then?
We need to have a clear who the second is.
It was Commissioner Galang.
Galang seconded it, right?
So the recommendation will read, as I understand, staff recommends, oh no, I'm sorry, the planning commission recommends approval to the city council for the variance request for minor site development permit number MS 24-0257 to allow a proposed covered deck to encroach into the required side yard setback. Motioned by Vice Chair Culkins and seconded by Commissioner Galang. I will now take roll.
What about, I'm sorry, what about the PMS 24-0257?
I'm sorry, what was that, Attorney Kreech?
Yeah, exactly, exactly what Commissioner Albana said.
Okay, sorry, I'm reading, I'm reading it from the staff report. Let me go back. Okay. All right. So we have a motion by Vice Chair Culkins, a second by Commissioner Galang that will read, adopt resolution number 25006 recommending the city council approve minor site development permit MS 24-0257 and variance VA 25001 in conformance with the development standards of the R1-H single family residential hillside zoning district, subject to the findings.
No, because I don't think that it's adopting the resolution. Proposed resolution, I don't think that they, is this, is being proposed for adoption by the motion mover.
So proposed resolution. Number two.
Commissioner, Commissioner Culkins, what I heard your motion was that you're moving to approve and recommend the city council approve minor site development permit number MS 240257 and variance VA 25001.
Yes, sir.
I'll now take vote. Attorney Kreech?
Yes, I think the motion was clearly stayed.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Kong?
Nay.
Commissioner Owasty?
Abstain.
Commissioner Albana?
Aye.
Commissioner Galang?
Aye.
Commissioner, I'm sorry, Vice Chair Culkins?
Aye.
And Chair Gupta?
Aye.
Okay, so Commissioner Kong, was that a nay?
Yes, it was a nay.
Thank you. And an abstain by Commissioner Owasty. And the remainder is all aye. Thank you.
Is there any new business? Okay, is there any motion to adjourn then?
I make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll, I'll second.
Thank you. Commissioner Kong?
Aye.
Commissioner Owasty?
Aye.
Commissioner Albana?
Aye.
Commissioner Galang?
Aye.
Vice Chair Culkins?
Aye.
And Chair Gupta. Thank you.
We're supposed to read the statement.
Yeah.
Go, go. Oh.
Any final decision of any board, commission or department head? The city of Milpitas may appeal the decision to the city council, filing written notice of the appeal with the city clerk within 12 calendar days of the date of said decision and paying the required fee. This time limit shall be strictly enforced. The meeting adjourned. Thank you.